Good evening, it's 7 o'clock so I'm going to call this meeting to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to excuse Brenda Kinzer.
Yes, she has to be excused, she won't be here tonight. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go ahead and take your call. Brenda Kinzer has been excused.
Here.
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 President.
Here.
Here.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, did you want to make a request?
I do, Madam Mayor. I would like to request that we move the late materials memo, the payment memo dated May 22nd to the consent agenda under item 8.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, just so that the public knows, the late materials has to do with our IT bill, Chambers, applied for a $30,000 grant, and he's using that money to make a payment. So that's what this is about. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so now I'm looking for a motion of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been approved by Councilwoman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And now an approval of the consent agenda, adding the late materials as item number 8.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 8.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie, seconded by Councilwoman Couch. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares? Okay. And tonight we have a special presentation, Helping Hands Food Bank with Rebecca Larson. Is she here? Yeah, there you are Rebecca. Good evening.
Thank you for the offer of the ride, but you see, I got here on time. You're welcome. I remember the one time you said your car broke down and I didn't want it to be like that, so I had to ask. Do we have a clicker?
Not yet. We can't, we're still trying to get the computer warmed up here on this thing, so...
I have no jokes, I'm Dutch. I'm also military, so I have no soul.
Oh yeah, oh, there you go. But we all know that's not true. Is it something that maybe you can start without it, or do you want to work with the...
It's got pretty pictures.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce Brandon Fullerton, who's my Development Director over at Helping Hands Solutions Center. And we have Bob in the back, who's, uh, Bob, a volunteer. And then we have Jacob in the back, who's also on staff at the Solutions Center.
Yeah, but none of us are, none of us are an IT department, you see.
Speaking of IT, off spending.
And the week before that?
So, we might want to just maybe do some staff reports.
Right, I was just gonna say, so if you want to wait just a minute, we will start with staff reports and then hopefully, once everything gets warmed up. Sorry about that, I apologize. So, good evening, Lieutenant Macarres, do you have a report?
Well, I'm excited that the police staffing is on the agenda tonight. I like that idea. Also, recently attended a police resource allocation and scheduling course, and in that I'm trying to find and implement a way to provide ample staffing for the departments. To the means of scheduling and obviously more bodies would be helpful. So I've came up with several options that will work and I think this would be very beneficial for the department.
Okay, thank you. Chief Klinger?
Just got a couple items, Mayor. We've got, today was kind of a sad day, it was Marnie Fox's last day with the department. She wouldn't have after 10 years, hung it up as far as working part-time for us. Her and her husband both, Richard, who left us on the 13th, was his last day. So they both did a little over 10 years, so it was kind of a sad day, see them go. We have the great train coming in tomorrow morning. Todd is headed over to Burlington Northern Yard in Burlington at a little after 6:00 for their safety meeting at 6:30. The cranes are supposed to be there at 7:00, so this train car should be coming in sometime between 7:00 and 10:00, I'm guessing. It'll be coming through town, so it should be an interesting show if anybody wants to come down to the training site and watch. And also, as Councilwoman DeYoung was saying, we've got a lot of EMT students that will be coming to us real soon, so you'll see a whole bunch of fresh faces out there on the med calls that aren't with the department, but we're going to help train them up.
All right.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Coleman?
Well, speaking of fresh faces, we have two new employees in the planning department staff. Last time I was here, I mentioned that Catherine, we're a planning intern and started, and she's been working part-time for us and it's been excellent having her. She's already been helping with the one project to get ushered through to the Planning Commission, and I'll speak about that in a moment. And the other new face is Michelle Grace, who started last week and is training with Joanne, to replace Joanne when Joanne retires at the end of June. So, there's going to be, Joanne is having her going away party on the 27th, and I think there's been an open invite to everybody for that. She unfortunately doesn't really like people making a big deal about it, about her and the accolades, but she's done such a great job, so people can't help to rave about her. And then she gets embarrassed, it's kind of cute. So we'll miss Joanne, but Michelle's doing a great job. She has a lot of experience and we're happy to have her. So, the project I was speaking of that Catherine was working on is the Urban Village Mixed Use Project. So, this has been a project that's been clicking along for years, actually. It started in 2008, and then with the market crash, it went on hiatus until last year and brought it back to the Planning Commission with a little fresh blood in the department and was able to put her on some tasks that got us to the finish line. And just last night, we had a Planning Commission meeting with practically last draft of the design regulations, the zoning code regulations, and a new subarea plan for the urban village mixed use overlay. So what that would do is enable the property owners in that area to optionally use the urban village design regs and zoning code regs to do a urban village type project in that specific geographic area. So, the Planning Commission's going to have one more public hearing on all the complete documents at their June meeting, and then after that, it will presumably come to the, presumably they will approve it, since they've worked so hard to get it completed, and then move it on to the City Council for the council's review and possible adoption. So we're looking forward to getting that to the City Council, since it's been a long time coming. Thank you to the Planning Commission for all the, much work that they've put into it. Planning Commission also had a public hearing last night for the six-year transportation improvement plan, I can let Mark talk more about that. Why don't I do that now?
All right, thank you. Mr. Feigberger?
Yes, as John mentioned, presented on the 2020 to 2025 Transportation Improvement Program. They did recommend that that come to you for review and approval, and that is set for the public hearing and the first read on June 12th, with the second read on the following council meeting. That TIB will focus mainly on the eight projects and make up the Jones-John-Liner Trail Quarter, which we've talked about quite a bit over the last year. And I'll give a review of that again, plus the other projects that are happening currently. One of which is the Signal revisions at SR 20 and SR 9 Township. I'm in the process of starting the consultant selection on that. Gearing up to get that consultant selected and begin that design work in July and have that ready to go to construction in 2020 if funds are available. They're actually programmed for 2021. Sometimes we can accelerate those, just depends on how other projects in the regions come in. That's funded by federal funds through the Council of Governments. Another thing related to that, we submitted two applications to the Council of Governments for their federal funds, same program that funded the Signal project. They were both centered around one of the phases of the Jones-John-Liner project that you authorized the grant applications last week. We've already met and had a review of all of the projects, and there's some excellent competition this year, there's some good projects all around the Skagit County area that have come in, so not totally sure we'll get anything this time, but we're in position if it does work out. Anybody that's driven down State Street knows that the striping is finally complete there, and so that project's in closeout. I believe the mayor's signed the completion documents to date for that, for TIB's final reimbursement. David is working on the SR 20 lane widening that goes by the Life Care from Hodgins to Hope Camp. We hope to have that out to bid in the next three or four weeks. It's coming along pretty well. Nathan's crew's been preparing the solid waste operations site down there for the removal of the preload, which will follow the start of the library project. I'm sure Aaron will report at length on that, but we're getting that site ready for that operation. And they also did some pavement patching on Fourth Street today. We've been having a number of complaints from the residents over there, and so I haven't driven it myself, but I'm sure it's better than it was. Not as good as it could be, but that would require a major rebuild, which we don't have the funds for at the present time. Also, I'm sure the council members will be reporting on it. Olmsted Park, there was a Parks Advisory Board meeting tonight, or Parks Committee meeting on that. We have gotten our final version of the wetlands report. I had mentioned to you earlier that about half of the park came back as wetlands, most of that south of Wildflower, the Wildflower entrance. Nathan and I and the mayor met with Pacific Land State Scape Architecture this morning to kick the design off again. And so we'll be repositioning the major features that you've seen before on behalf of the park that we can develop. It still looks pretty exciting, it's going to be a nice project, and so we're anxious to get a revised design, bring that to you to look at. The Parks Committee first, of course. And let's see, we have some tree removal. Did that start today, Nathan, on Highway 9? Some old overgrown alders that are south of the Highway 20 intersection there that unfortunately, we own those, even though it's limited access right of way of DOTs. It turns out that those are ours, so we're cutting down the overgrown trees and going to get that to where we can maintain it easier, so it doesn't grow out of control on us again in the future. And finally, next Tuesday, we have scheduled right now to, for BNSF to come in and remove the tracks at Ferry Street. So they're saw cut, basically our crew will come in behind them and temporary patch that, and then we'll permanently pave that when we have our next paving operation. So that's a long awaited improvement for Ferry Street. That's all I had to report on.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Mark, if that's all right? Yay on Ferry Street. Is there in the design to take down the hump a little bit, and if so, by how much?
Yes, it'll come down about a foot and a half.
18 inches?
Yeah, it won't be completely gone. We're kind of taking some license. BNSF reserves the right to put that track back at some time, so what we're doing, they're going to remove the track and the ties, which is about yay deep, and so that's how we're going to cut the pavement back to that level. And so it should be much better than it was.
Excellent. And then you spoke about the striping on State Street. I received a comment from a neighbor who owns a couple properties on State Street, and they were concerned about the impact to the retail business and then one of their other properties is a professional service business, that in the past, as they recalled, when striping was done or retouching the parking spaces, the street was not closed. And they had concerns about impact on their business. Also highlighted that when they took lunch for the hour, that they left the street closed. And was just wondering if there's some language in the future that we could throw in there, being sensitive to keeping traffic going there and access especially to retail? Thank you.
Yes, we attempt to do that, and I'll just let you know how the facts are on striping these days. As you know, we waited five months to get them to stripe it, working around weather. We've had periodic rains even in the last few weeks. They basically showed up and started their work. And that's, we got a notice out, but it was the day of the work, so we had virtually no opportunity. Our choice is to send them packing, whereupon we wait again for another window and the busier get. It's not a good situation, any way you look at it. I guess the best thing I can say about that is, part of the reason it took so long physically is we use thermoplastic, which lasts about five or six years before we have to restripe it, so it prevents us having to come back and do it every year like we do with our paint striping. So it's not a great answer, and I know that, and we got the complaints too, and about all we can do is apologize and let them know how it was.
And just to leave on a positive note, the neighbor did mention how responsive and attentive staff was to the concerns, and even though they didn't like the answer, they appreciated the response. Thank you so much.
And physically with the thermoplastic, it does take a little while to dry, and so the lunch thing, it looked like they were callously leaving that, but honestly, with those ladder style crosswalks, if you drive through them, you ruin them, and so they have to set for about an hour to properly cure out. It's just not a great thing, but it's one of the things we have to do.
Mark, I'd just like to comment, I live there on State Street, and I found it a little inconvenient, but I have to admit, I was amazed how fast it went.
All right, so we're going to pause right here, so that we can go back to our guests to do the special presentation, and assuming everything's up and ready to go. All right.
Thanks for having us. If you don't know me, I'm Rebecca Larson from Helping Hands Solutions Center, I'm the Executive Director. I've been there for four years, it's amazing, the accomplishments that have happened in the last four years. Bob can attest to that for sure. Did I do it wrong? So, on our board of directors, we have really tried really hard to build around a variety of people, to include Paul, thank you for your support. We have someone from the E.O.T.S.O. Endeavor Marathon, who knows what they are today. Brandon Atkinson, Brian Williams is a participant, so we have a participant on our board now. And Lisa is from TriCo. So we're trying to take different areas, we have someone from the school as well, and then Ginny Good. It's been a long process to get a really great board put together, but I'm really excited about what's next and their active levels. Well, you said I have to point it at him. We currently, this is our staff currently. Are you doing it yourself? Yeah. I'm not good at technology. Our staff is myself, the Executive Director, Brandon is our Development Director, Miranda is our Executive Assistant, Eric is our Operations Manager, Jacob is our Warehouse Coordinator, and David is our Warehouse Coordinator, half-time, part-time person. So when I first got here, it was me, and then me, and then me, and then about 200 volunteers. So we've really grown in the last four years, for sure. Next. Our volunteers, we have about 120 that come on a weekly basis, but we're up to about 400. Some people come as big groups one time, so we definitely have a robust, a robust group of volunteers. And we're always needing more. As the need goes up, you'll see where we're going, and we definitely need more. This 2018, we put in 38,000 volunteer hours. That's the equivalent to almost $650,000 worth of volunteer hours that they donated back to the facility. Excited. So, yeah, I'm sorry, these pictures are weird. So CHA is our Cutting Hunger on the Weekends Program. We currently serve 850 children, we deliver about 500 to their homes. We partner with Skagit Valley Herald. We've been partnering with them and United Way for the last two years. What's different from last year is we actually had to take over Mount Vernon's routes. It grew too big for them to handle, so we were able to step in and take that over. So we deliver about 250 kids that are in the Mount Vernon School District, and then we deliver the rest here in the Cedar Valley School District on Friday. And this is to cover lunch and breakfast for every weekend, so they can go back to school on Monday, fully nourished and ready to go back to school. We have nine pantries all over the county, to include Emerson and Mount Vernon, the Skagit Valley College, and a bunch of the schools here in Cedar Valley, and Samish Elementary. There's kids that don't necessarily need a bag of food, but at the middle school, if they don't, aren't able to get school lunches, they go into that pantry and take what they need, and there's some food there. Emerson is one of the ones that is near and dear to our heart. These kids are the State Street of Mount Vernon, and they didn't qualify for food and reduced lunch, because they don't really have parents to fill out the paperwork. And so we stepped in and not only started a pantry, but we also connected with about four different churches, and they come and cook dinners, meals for them during the week, which is really great. Next. So Mobile Food is one of those ones that, when you do it, it's the best program we have, because these are your grandparents and wonderful people in their homes that can't leave, that need your help, and they just have lovely stories and are lovely people. We currently have about, I think we're up to...
41.
41 a week that we personally deliver to their homes. Our ultimate goal is to start, Lyman Food Bank actually closed, and so our goal is to start heading up River and being able to have these deliveries happen in Lyman and Hamilton and Concrete and up. It's just more about capacity and finding a right driver, and we have the papers, sometimes we just don't have the drivers to deliver them.
Becky, sorry to interrupt. How many, how many more would you get from that area? Do you know how many, like if you combined all of Lyman and Hamilton, how many more meals on the list?
They don't, I don't know the exact number, but when we did the math on how many people that were going to Lyman, that are now not showing going anywhere, it was about between 30 and 40 people that, and that makes me think they were going to Lyman and weren't they not coming. And I think that's not Lyman-Hamilton, I think that's a combination of the two. So I think we would probably double our numbers if, as we head up, up River. I know the Cape Horn area of Concrete, there's always a need and they're always calling us, and we just don't go that far. But it's a Cedar Valley address. Thank you. Do you know that person in that picture right there? It's you. Some of our community partners, you kind of would be surprised how many community partners we have, not just United Way, not just Community Action. We partner with obviously all the other food banks. We are personally picking up all of Costa, which is about 25,000 pounds of food a month, and we distribute that out to the other food banks. And then we have partnered with the Cedar Valley Rise, and myself and Lieutenant Dan are on the board there, or on the committee there, and I feel like I was personally, we were personally asked to be on that committee, so that people look at the Solutions Center as a place that people can go and volunteer, and kids can come out there and get some good time with some of our great adults that we have there, so. And that's been a really great project. So our partnerships are really long, and we keep adding more. I was just down at a conference at Food Lifeline, doing a presentation on disaster preparedness for food banks, and we always get asked questions about our facility and what we're doing, and so it's been a really interesting process over this last year. Job Corps is one of our great project partners. Last night, about 20 or 30 kids came and they packed about 4,000 of those bags, CHA bags, and they just really have a good time. And a lot of them use the food bank as children, so this is a nice way for them to give back as well. And they come twice a month. And we're the only, we're the only group that they can come twice. Everybody else, they can only go once a month, too, and we get them twice a month, so. WSU Extension comes in and does food nutrition programs. One of the things they're going to start doing is diabetes training. I've asked them to come and talk to our volunteers about training on best, better choices. If someone said, you hear it all the time, a participant will say, "Well, I'm a diabetic, I don't, can't choose that." And I would like our volunteers to be educated on, well, here's a kind of a chart that shows some better choices, and they've been through some training, and WSU is setting that up, so our volunteers can say, "Well, that's not a good choice, but this would be a better choice," if you're looking for a better choice. In a very polite way, of course. This winter, Knights of Columbus, they handed out brand-new coats. They started out with about 100, they went all on this first night, and they wanted to get, we're open now four days a week, so they wanted to stretch it out, so they were able to get another like 400 coats in, and so they handed out about 500 total coats to our kids, and it was really awesome to watch that happen. Our truck, our new truck that we've had, I think the number is, we've already picked up 3 million pounds of food in it in a year and a half. That sounds crazy, but it's true, I'm not exaggerating, we did the math. But thanks to Boeing, the Skagit Community Foundation, and the Blackburn family, we were able to purchase this brand-new reefer, and we've already put it to the test, and it's been a great project. And if you heard on Facebook, we got our fuel line cut. We were, it was down for eight days, so that was the disappointing part, but a mechanic, a decent mechanic stepped in and fixed it for free. Well, we bought the parts for $90, so we were able to not spend a lot, but we will be spending a lot on fencing. Some of, a couple things that are not on the slide. At the conference, we were awarded the Food Lifeline Agency Excellence Award. It was five different agencies, and Washington State won, we were one of three food banks, and there was two distribution centers that won. And so that's kind of out there. And that was a really, they gave us a grant of $1,000 for the, for that award, and their biggest thing was extending our hours and really making it very, very easy for people to have better access to food, and they were really proud of us for all that work. So in 2018, some of the... So in 2018, some of our numbers that we didn't have on here, uh, we served about 17,000 unduplicated people. That's counting anybody who walked in just once. If you count out how many times they actually came in, so if they came in 52 times, we actually served 157,000 individuals. There's only 11,000 people that live in Cedar Wally. So if you take that number, um, that's more than that live in Skagit County. I mean, we're talking Skagit County and, you know, maybe Stanwood, if you add that.
So is that over and above the backpacks?
Oh, yeah, mhm. And so there is definitely a need. Most of our folks do come from Cedar Wally, um, but, I mean, between Mount Vernon and Cedar Wally, they're very, very close to the exact same number. Uh, we're seeing a huge growth in Snohomish and Rockham County. They have residency requirements, so if you don't live by the food bank, you don't go to the food bank. So we don't turn anybody away ever, so we allow anybody to come. So that's our biggest, I think the best part about us. If you come with a need, we will, we'll help that. Let's see. Uh, our pounds of food. We, um, rescued 1.3 million pounds of food last year, which equals about 1.8 meals, uh, 1.8, 1.8 million meals. That's what went back into our community, and for the huge cost of, I think we bought food for $32,000. So we're very efficient at what we do. We buy food at three cents a pound, and, um, it's just an amazing process. So some of our upcoming projects.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, uh, again, I'm Brandon Fullerton, Development Director, Helping Against Food Bank, and I'm gonna talk about what I consider to be, is the extra fun part, which is our upcoming projects. Uh, as Rebecca mentioned previous, uh, we have a three-part plan to try to go up river, and our goal is, um, right now, we feel like we work pretty well on the equality side of things, where everybody can come to the food bank, but is it equitable for someone to drive 30 miles to come to us? So what we wanna do is we wanna work on equity in the upcoming years, and make sure that no matter which food bank you go into, whether it be Marble Mount or Cedar Wally Helping Hands, you get the same quality, same quantity of food. So as you can see, uh, we're in phase one. Uh, we're, uh, we're getting ready to deliver pre-assembled boxes to underserved areas, such as the Upper Skagit, uh, Reservation, uh, Swenomish Reservation, et cetera, trying to get some of these people who have a hard time getting out to us and, and just delivering pre-made boxes to them. Uh, that's basically to establish a need, get some statistics. Uh, the overall goal, uh, is to purchase a dedicated truck, uh, think Bookmobile, but there's a food bank inside of it, and then we can take that into communities that don't have, uh, emergency food services, or we can take it to existing food banks that are perhaps smaller, uh, and, and bolster their, uh, their, their give-out. So, uh, phase three, uh, we're gonna go from having the food bank mobile to also delivering all of our other services. So, uh, Cutting Hunger on the weekends for the kids, uh, mobile food for folks who are homebound, as well as, um, some of the other programs such as, uh, DSHS kind of services, job training, that, that kind of stuff. So we're gonna kind of next level at phase three. Next slide, please. Okay, uh, so we got a solar product in the works, uh, we're trying to get funding for. Uh, it's a 23.4 kilowatt system, 78 panels. Uh, this one's a grid tie, uh, with option for battery or backup, generator backup. Um, thanks to, uh, a generous donor, Robert Gates. Uh, he bought us a backup generator that's gonna be hard-plumbed in, natural gas, and will allow us to completely do our operations unchanged. So we can operate fridge, freezers, all the office lights, what, what have you, without having to worry about rationing of power. Um, and so the grid, the solar idea is going to have a generator backup. Um, and the idea of that is increases our ability to continue to operate in emergency, but it also lowers our daily ops costs. So, you know, the thing we're always, you know, we can raise the money goals, you know, within a certain year, but we've still gotta pay our bills every month. So if we could reduce our electric bill, which is one of the bills that we have the most control over, uh, we're looking to kind of make a big one-time lump sum payment to kind of save us month-to-month. Uh, next slide, please. So our emergency generator, as I mentioned earlier, it's a 40-kilowatt system, and it allows us to continue our mission during emergencies. Uh, we've been working with Skagit Emergency Management on becoming a distribution center in case of, uh, uh, you know, the big one ever comes, or whatever kind of emergency situation. Uh, we've also lined up getting all of our staffers trained on ham radio, and purchasing ham radio, that way we can connect with law enforcement and FEMA and all those guys, to make sure that they know we're, we're still around and, and available. Um, and like I said, Robert Gates, uh, former Secretary of Defense, was very concerned about us having, being able to operate in case of an emergency. He generously donated to us, so we're super excited to bring that to you. And that's it for me. Becky?
Yeah, one of the main things for Cedar Wally is this emergency preparedness center. Um, and so we are working very closely with the, um, the county and getting a signed document of partnership, um, that we would be one of their two locations for emergency prep. Eric, our operations manager, was at the Hamilton plant when they had their CPod training. He is the manager running it, and so that's, I personally feel my military background, it's good to have everybody trained, and I think this is a perfect facility for that, and that's why it's really important for us to have everything kind of in place. A couple of things coming up. In June, June 15th, we're doing a safety day, uh, for the community, uh, from 10:00 to 2:00. I think we have the fire department coming, and the whole list of people coming. So hopefully we can, we'll get the advertisement once we have it kind of set, um, out there for the community, uh, working with our partners at PSE, um, and then Brew Fest in September, so that'll be fun.
I have a question regarding the training that you do. I know that you're kind of working with some of the volunteers who are coming in, and also maybe even some of the individuals who come in. Can you talk, can you speak more to that?
The internship?
Yes.
So we're working with a couple of different programs, uh, WorkSource and WorkFirst programs in the county. Um, and we are doing internship programs. Jacob is one of our success stories from no job, job training, to now he has a full-time job with us. He made it hard for us to get rid of him. He's so good. Um, we've had, currently, we have two gentlemen on it, and we have one, two, three, three female in the administrative part, working for the development part and administrative parts. And what's really great is, um, they have a lot of ideas of what we can do, and it's a nice, fresh look. And all of these individuals are coming from families that use the food bank, and with the goal of them, you know, getting the job training, job placements. And, um, I know one of them wants to be electrician, so the goal is to get them to that next point, to the apprenticeship program, but they need lots of job training and a nice, safe place to do it, so that's, and they're, they're helping us as well. And they actually get paid minimum wage 40 hours a week to work for us, so.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, one of our interns actually talked about, um, filling a gap of a high school, life-after-high-school program, where we could come in and bring adult experts in, and juniors and seniors come in and learn some of those, how to pay your taxes, what does it mean? What's life insurance? What's health insurance? What's a checkbook? You know, all those things that they're not learning, and I thought that was a great idea to kind of get some youth into the building and also have them connect with some really great, um, adults that have expert skills, and yes, I will be going to that class as well, so. Any other questions? And I thank you guys for your support. Um, we, um, we're on the budget, so I wanted to say thank you for that, and we actually are putting it towards the fencing, because we've had some security issues, and I think that's an appropriate place to put that in, to make it a nice, safe place.
Right, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Becky.
Thank you.
And so we will continue on with our staff reports. Mr. Berg, are you ready, or?
So today was a big day in our library project. Uh, the project opened bids at 2 o'clock this afternoon. We had six bidders, and you have on your base the bid tabulation. I put some copies out on the table back there by Nathan as well. Also on your base is, uh, updated budget summary that Doug put together this afternoon. So, uh, I guess I'll just walk through it for you, and we'll talk about where we go from here. Again, these were just opened a few hours ago, so we are still going through the process of verifying all of the information to ensure that, uh, our bidders are responsive, but the apparent low bidder is Valdez Construction out of Oak Harbor, Washington. You can see, uh, their base bid came in at about 4.8 million. Uh, architect's estimate was 4.4 to 4.6 million, and our budget carried a MAC, a maximum allowable construction cost, of just over 4.5 million. Alternate 1 is the additional square footage, alternate 2 is some additional insulation, and alternate 3 is, uh, are the timber benches using the old timbers from the feed barn. So when you put all those together, add sales tax, and update the project contingency of about 10%, we end up with a total of just under 6 million. And you can see on our, uh, budget, we have been carrying about a $5.4 million line item for that. Of course, uh, we were successfully awarded a, uh, million dollars in additional funding. Uh, that was specifically intended to address all of our project alternates. So I guess the exciting news is, there's lots of exciting news. Having six bidders in this climate, number one, was really exciting. We've got what we think are pretty tight bids and tight bid spread, for the most part, so that tells us that bidders understood our project and were able to make sense of it. And then budget-wise, if you look at the, uh, project expense budget summary, you know, recognizing that this has not been updated to include the actual bid numbers with the alternates, so, you know, we're about, just about $600,000, uh, will need to be added to this expense budget. Uh, we do have about $800,000 available, so, you know, we will still have about $200,000 in currently unallocated funds, which we'll be talking about in the coming, uh, months in terms of our backup power generator, potentially a photovoltaic array, some public art, those sorts of things are all potentially on the list for further conversation, using the dollars that the legislature provided for us, so. A really exciting news. Process-wise, the council adopted way back in, uh, oh, I guess it would have been a year ago, the 9th of May of 2018, Resolution 98918, which delegates authority to me as the city supervisor to execute contracts without a dollar limitation, so long as they're within the budget. And, uh, normally, we don't just go off and sign $5 million contracts without talking to you, so I wanna make sure we're communicating very clearly tonight. Uh, my intention is, uh, process-wise, uh, we've identified, we've notified Valdez that they are the apparent low bidder, and under our bid specs, they have 48 hours, that is until 2:00 PM Friday, to produce, uh, some additional documentation to, um, you know, make sure that they qualify. Assuming that they do qualify, we would then move forward with the rest of their requirements and contracting with them. If they don't, then obviously we have to deal with that, potentially move to the next apparent low bidder. Uh, we don't have any reason to believe that they won't. Everything that we've seen so far seems to be on all fours and checks out. So with that in mind, uh, my intent would be to execute a contract sometime between now and the next city council meeting, so we get that process kicked off, again, consistent with Resolution 98918. Uh, I would guess probably at the June 12th meeting, or thereabouts, Doug will be bringing to you a, uh, budget amendment for the 2019 budget that has half a dozen items, probably about half a dozen items, one of which will be the library budget, to increase it, uh, to reflect the new revenue that has been awarded to the city from Washington State Legislature. So, um, I don't want there to be any confusion in the audience, I'm looking at you, Dennis. We're not going broke. I know, and we're not going broke. Uh, the budget will be going up, um, and that will be, uh, as a result of the additional million dollars coming in, and yes, we will be spending more, um, with that new money. So, um, stay tuned for that. Are there any questions, or are there any concerns from the council about where we are on that?
I had a question. I remember there was, uh, like a, a Plan B in case we got more money. Was that enough to cover all of that?
Yeah. Yeah, so Plan B is alternate, uh, it's really alternates 1, 2, and 3, but primarily it's alternate 1, which builds, I think it's about 800 square feet additional space. So, um, our intention will be to award the bids with all three alternates. And yes, um, even with the bid coming in $200,000 higher than our architect's estimate, and with the alternates, given the additional money from the legislature, we, we still have $200,000 more than we have currently anticipated spending.
Any other questions?
Erin, I just have, uh, a little need of clarification. So, how do we see the, where the money, I mean, I, I'm looking at your chart here. Doug's chart.
Yep.
But I mean, and then I'm looking over here at what the cost is for the, um, bids, and I'm not understanding exactly how the district and the city are splitting.
Oh, yeah, good question. So, um, probably the, the easiest way to look at that is on the, on the revenue side. But before we get there, we'll have to back up, and, uh, our 20-year agreements, of which we have three, are predicated on the city issuing $5 million in net debt, and, uh, paying the district for 20 years, a, an annual, um, fee for library usage, that is our assessed valuation multiplied times their millage rate, and then subtracting from that the debt service we pay for 20 years. So, uh, when we look at that, you know, you might look at that and say, "Well, gee, the city is doing this bond issue of 5.15 million, that's all city money." Well, it really isn't, because that, that repayment is being shared through our contract with the district for library services as a deduct from what we actually pay the district. So with that in mind, if you look at the top of the page, and you go to the center column marked Adjusted Budget, you see the Commerce Grant totals 2.425 million. So that is the million and a half last year, and the million this year, minus what Commerce charges us to give us our money. So we get the net of 2.425 million. The second line, then, is the general obligation bond issue, which the city council approved, I think, two meetings ago now, um, and will be issued, and that debt Doug may be talking about, there's some more detail, is scheduled to close on June 5th with Banner Bank at 3.21% interest for 5.15 million. The Construction Reserve Fund is a product of our agreements with the district, and what that includes is a $30,000 a month payment from the marriage, and, um, I think February of last year, through, um, the, the amendment that the council approved, maybe two, three meetings ago, through September of 2019. All of that money that we're currently paying together goes into the project. And the city contributed an additional 226,000 for our 41% of the Iron Skillet purchase. Uh, the $7,700 on the next line is simply the rent we collected on the buildings before we demolished them. And then you move down to the district reimbursement. The district committed an additional 325,000 of, of money for the Iron Skillet purchase. They're putting in an additional $188,000 for fixtures, furnitures, and equipment, FFNE, that's included within the construction budget. And then they're reimbursing us for about $28,000 in architectural services that we've contracted for, for FFNE, that the district will be acquiring separately, um, from our administered project, as well as $3,000 for AV design. So, so the total dollars that will run through the city's budget are $8.98 million. Separately, the district, if the million and a half that they committed, will be administering about, um, 960,000 of that, with 542 coming to us. So that's how you get the total project budget, and how you can kind of understand the partnering. That million and a half dollars was money the district committed to by contract. Uh, in fact, they committed up to that much. Um, I, I think they will spend all of that. They've been, I think, very receptive to being flexible with how that money would be spent. Originally, it was identified as opening day collection, fixtures, furnitures, and equipment. But in reality, their opening day collection's been growing since the day we came together. You know, every day they're buying new You know, every day they're buying new books, so there won't be a need to have this one-shot half-million bucks worth of new books on day one, because that collection's building every day. So that's, that's kind of the revenue side, and if you look down, how do you, I think your question was, well, how do I match the bid tabs to this? So continuing down that center column, adjusted budget, the first section deals with really how we acquired the first items, the site acquisitions, so that's the purchase of the feed barn and the Iron Skillet, our A&E budget, architectural and engineering, and then construction. You know, that is the MAC, the maximum allowable construction cost that we've been carrying in the project. That 5.373 million is the number that I mentioned at the very beginning, will have to be increased by about 600,000 to match our lowest, our apparent low bidder with all of the alternates that we've added. So this is, this is in part anticipated increase. And then we've got some other sections, these are broken down to fit Commerce's grant, so we've got some construction management money, and other, that other line item includes site utilities, you know, commissioning, you know, just a whole slew of things like that. But you get to the very bottom, so again, the center column, you see that 797,000, so that is the difference between the revenue and expenditures, is that there's $800,000 more based upon our originally estimated MAC, without the project additions. So, when you factor that 600,000, and that's how I come to the conclusion that we've got about 200,000 in revenues in excess of our planned expenditures. And within that, we'll be continuing to carry a 500, $500,000 construction contingency, we have an additional, I think about $93,000 in reserve funds for other project expenses. So, my expectation is that as long as this project goes smoothly, you know, we'll have multiple phases of adds to it, such as the generator, PV panels, et cetera. So by the time we get to the end, and our risk is fully mitigated, we know what we can, what we can spend to enhance the project, deliver the best library we can. So how's that?
That helps.
Perfect. Any other questions? You're afraid to ask, maybe you have a five-minute answer. No, this is really important, that, I mean, I recognize that it's a lot, kind of here and there, and so it really is important that everyone understands where we're at, especially you, Dennis.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you. I have two items. The first, I'll just reiterate a little bit what Erin just talked about, and that is on June 5th, we will be closing the bond on the library project. Banner Bank was a successful bank for the private placement bond that they'll be purchasing, and the terms are, we've discussed, 3.21% for 20 years. When we close, there is a required 1% draw, but we use that really for our closing costs to issue the bond, there's some attorney fees and things like that. The rest of the time, we just wait until we actually start incurring costs with the project, we don't have to take all the money now and start paying interest on it. So we'll draw on it until the end of construction, and then we do the permanent takeout and go from there. So it's nice to get that one wrapped up, June 5th, we'll sign the papers, and we'll move on from there. The other item I have is, today, I actually filed our 2018 annual report with the state auditors. That's always a big hurdle to get over in the month of May each year, it's due by May 30th down in Olympia. What I'm going to do with that, instead of filing that and moving on, is I'll be giving each of you a copy of that, and it's a little long, but what I want to do is make sure that you, as our overseers of everything we do, have that information, I can go over that with you in summary. So you'll have that, and you'll know what we're doing, and what the results of operations were for last year. So it's nice to have that one done, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilman Couch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Keep it brief, but I just, a couple things, I'm looking forward to our discussion around the possibility of the levy lid lift and fixing some of our staffing issues that, within the police department. And I wish everyone who filed last week the best of luck in your coming elections.
Thank you. Councilman Owen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilwoman Cornege?
I was just going to mention, speaking of Robert Gates, that we did our opening of, our ribbon cutting for Skagit Vets Connect through Community Action, that was last week?
Last week?
Yeah, it was Tuesday. That was really well attended, and we're pretty excited about that. Also, I was able to help out with the Skagit Trail Builders on May 11th, and they have another date coming up already on June 8th to finish up at Northern State, building some trails. Me and my grandkids and my foster son went and spent like seven hours that day, six or seven hours that day, and I earned this beautiful t-shirt. But anyways, they're looking for some more volunteers, and also someone that would be nice enough to make us lunch. There was about 21 volunteers last time, I'd be willing to donate some of the food, just so you know. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman DeYoung?
Just real short tonight, just wanted to remind everyone that it's Memorial Day, and it's a time to, for remembrance. Some of us will be out at the cemetery, and we'll hear more about that on Monday. Just a point of reflection, two years ago, Memorial Day, being in National Cemetery in Marietta, Georgia, it was a Union Cemetery, and with Union soldiers, that was, had more interred there than the population of Cedar Woolley, and being among those gravestones by, and bracketed by the sergeants of those troops, was very moving. And I hope that will stay with me every Memorial Day, remembering that freedom isn't free. Thank you.
Right. Councilwoman Dan Lee?
I'm happy.
Okay, Councilwoman Kelly?
I just realized that at the last meeting, I didn't take the opportunity to thank the city for opening this room up for our luncheon, because we were in a situation where the community center wasn't available, so the chamber had their luncheon here, and the Parks Department did a great job of bringing the tables down and setting us up, and we were able to use the kitchen here, and it all worked out really well, and so I just wanted to say thank you from the chamber.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you as well. So I just have a couple things. Saturday, I was at the ribbon cutting for the Y, it was well received and well attended, and they extend a special thanks to the city of Sejewooley, we were one of the first to really offer support to them, and we are also partnering with them. We will be putting on some programs, this will be in a flyer that's coming out, but there will be three summer recreational programs that will be coming out, the Y will be doing it here in Sejewooley. Also want to remind everybody that the Y is offering for the citizens of Sejewooley, Swim Night the first Saturday of every month, it's from 6:30 to 8:30. So be sure to take advantage of that. And as Councilwoman DeYoung had mentioned, Monday is Memorial Day, there will be a ceremony that is put on by the American Legion at 11:00 AM, and I spoke last year, they asked me to come back, so I'll be speaking again this year. So I hope to see you there, have a safe weekend. So moving on to public comments, it is 7:59, I am going to open it up for public comment, please state your name and your address, and try to keep it two, three minutes, so. Corinne?
Good evening, I'm Corinne Johnson, I live at 739 Sapp Road, working with the Arts Council of Sejewooley, and we just wanted to announce that we're going to be teaming up with the Summer Concert Series and bringing art to the park during the, during the concert series, on Sundays, July 21st through August 11th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And they're going to be helping promote our community talent show that we're going to be having Sunday, August 25th, the times to be announced. We're all looking for volunteers to help others together, so if you're interested in helping out with Art in the Park or any other art projects in Sejewooley, please contact me at artscouncilofsejewooley@gmail.com. And, yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you for all you do. Art in the Park last year was fun, it was just, it was well attended, it was a lot of fun, thank you for the energy.
I look forward to explaining that and to make this summer really enjoyable for everybody.
Excellent, thank you.
Corinne, I got a question.
Sure.
Last time, didn't you did it like kind of at the end of like all of the concerts, like just kind of at the end, and this time, weren't you saying that you're going to do it kind of differently, like you're going to have it after every, or during every concert?
Yeah, we're going to do it during the concert series, in the upper part of the, of the park.
Every week, then?
Every week, yeah.
Yep.
And so if anybody would like to get a booth or anything like that, just contact me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Mr. O'Neill?
I'm getting calls, a couple of calls from people that didn't know my phone number, had to find it. I'm going to get into this thing on the city council, yeah, I'm sorry, but I am.
We need to, they, they need to name an address.
Okay, but my time's already started, am I going to go back to three minutes?
Name an address.
Daniel Sernio, 360-855-0385.
Address.
Oh, I moved, no, 09 Talcott Street, Sejewooley, and I'm already down 16 seconds, or two minutes, I don't know. I got, I got a couple of comments here, that I think that the city council's getting a real bum deal on this thing. I know, I was down here when you guys were discussing council, the salary, and I felt really bad for you, especially later, when four or five days later you find out the mayor vetoed it. I was, I was back here, and I was listening, and I heard a lot of people up there, four of you anyway, or five, that were asking for some leadership, or some idea of what was appropriate. You never got a response, and I feel sorry for you, because I think you were led right into the, right into the chute, and shot in the head. I also had a feeling that, Jermaine, I know you work really hard, and I'm sorry for the city, and I'm sorry to say it, but if you're happy at 400, if they should, you know, you always have the right to give the money back, and that goes for Mr. Couch too, that thinks he doesn't need the money, he probably doesn't. So I think if you really, especially Jared, you know, I'm not picking, well, I am picking on you, oh heck. If you really don't feel like you need a raise, and by all means, in September, if Julia figures out a way to come up with a number, I think you should write a check back to the city. There's no point in you taking money you don't think you need or want, or it's not justified. I just wouldn't refuse it, I stand up for your beliefs. You know, it's been 11 years since the council got a salary increase, and I'm sorry that you didn't give better support. And I'm going to pick on all these people over here, they've got raises.
No, you talk, talk to just the council.
Okay, well, I'll mention them. But the other city employees have gotten raises two, three, or four times, I'm talking to the people back there, just quite a few of them actually watch this. Anyway, the first raise you've asked for in 11 years, and you're acting like you should be civil servants. Well, you don't make enough money to even justify the town to be up there, and I think I figured out last time, it was, my limit was about $8 an hour, which Washington State law says is supposed to be 12. I would recommend you keep your hours, it may come out that hours and days are what you do to represent the city. It may come out that someday down the road, four or five years, you might get an adjustment on your pay, because they may find out that you are covered under the state Washington hourly pay, but you're going to have to have the hours to support what you were doing on that day. I am disappointed that it was pushed out to September, I don't know why it was pushed out to September, as far as dealing with it, rather than keep pushing it out, out, and not deal, you know, not dealing with the, the stuff that comes up, the business that comes up. The, anyway, I don't know a lot more, because I just was wrong, but I think it would be really needed to give you a little bit more money, and that you might be able to take the time to answer questions from the audience. The only thing we can do is ask questions, and then we go home without them being satisfied.
You have about 15 more seconds.
Okay, I know that the city in Mount Vernon does respond to questions, and they don't have time, a lot of times, the word, the word, like you folks, they do respond, they'll call people up and deal with their questions, and perhaps you could even answer other people's questions for other members of the council, I think that'd be great. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? All right, it is 8:05, and I am going to close public comment, and we will move on to unfinished business, the proposed amendment comprehensive plan. John, would you like to take this?
This is, this is about as easy as it gets. Earlier this year, the city council put one item on the 2019 docket, which is for the planning commission to work on in the comprehensive plan amendment cycle. That was to do some minor amendments to the transportation element. After a discussion last, earlier this month, the council wanted to also look at accessory dwelling, doing some regulations for accessory dwelling units during this 2019 docket cycle, and since it didn't, we haven't started any work on the 2019 docket, we thought it'd be okay to throw one more item on it. So, this is, this is just a request to put a second item on the 2019 docket, and then hopefully the planning commission can get, start working on it in, pretty soon here.
Are there any questions for John? Okay, do we have a motion? It's on page 38.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one and two for inclusion on the 2019 comprehensive plan docket, amendments to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan previously approved by the council, and amendments to the land use element and housing element of the comprehensive plan, as well as necessary amendments to the city's zoning regulations and design standards to address accessory dwelling units.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilwoman Cornege, seconded by Councilman Couch, any discussion? All in favor? All right, yep. Yeah, yeah.
So, John, when you say adding, address the accessory dwelling units, is this to actually look at forming a standard for them?
Well, we'll see where the planning commission and city council wants to go with it. We're, we're going to bring up the topic and, and see what the planning commission recommends, whether we, whether the city should allow ADUs in some form, or not allow ADUs, or, and then make a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council can look at that recommendation.
And what did the state decide on their end?
The state didn't decide anything, what the state said was, they started to draft legislation, and then it ended up not passing, but as Erin put it, the writing's on the wall, legislature is eager to address ADUs, and last time, the, last time, this 2019 cycle, they tried to tell jurisdictions how they should address ADUs, and so we thought it might be a good idea for Sejewooley to address ADUs in a, in a manner that fits Sejewooley. And so we'll have some ADU, we could have some ADU regulations on the books before legislature comes in and tells us how we need to do it.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve items one and two for inclusion on the 2019 comprehensive plan docket. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, on to new business, the levy lid lift for the police department. Erin?
Thank you. So this comes to the council as the culmination of about a year's worth of conversations that began late last summer, and have continued through this year. This memo is really the product of work done by police department staff, our finance director and mayor, and I, together. So I'll just walk you through it. What you've got tonight is an ordinance that would put the question to the voters on the November ballot, whether they would like to raise their own property taxes to hire more police officers and a records tech position. So, in Washington State, there are a number of options for property taxes, doing nothing allows the council the opportunity to raise taxes by no more than 1% per year, but with the voter's approval, there are several different ways that taxes can be increased. What's proposed in this ordinance is what's called a single-year levy lid lift that is permanent, so it takes it from where we are to a new place, and then it's that place that can grow by 1% a year. Other options include a single-year bump that only lives for a certain number of years, a temporary single-year levy lid lift. a temporary single-year levy lift, or a multi-year lift where you would go up by, you know, $100,000 a year for five years and then that could live on forever. Because we know what our needs are, the proposal here is to identify the cost of staffing, bump up once and then maintain. So specifically looking at the math, we have police officer costs of all in of about $143,500 per year. The police department put quite a bit of effort into identifying what the optimal department is and identifying what their deficiencies are. And from their perspective, they're short about nine FTE commissioned positions, I think probably one and a half non-commissioned positions and one limited commissioned position. It's pretty easy to do the math and recognize there really isn't a pathway from where we are today to that, especially not in one jump. So what's proposed in this particular ordinance would fund three patrol officer positions, a city share, that is 25% of a school or district resource officer position, and it would take a records position who's currently part-time and bump that position to full-time. So, you know, on FTE math, it's about three and a half. But in terms of actually hiring, it's four new people plus one part-time going to full-time. And the cost of that proposal is about $506,000 a year. The proposed lift generates about $557,000 a year. And that particular, the gap that you see there is intended to cover what we're anticipating to be costs and staffing that exceed 1% growth in the near term. And I'm not going to go too far down that path now, but I think you all know from annual budgeting that we don't see police department staffing costs going up by 1%. We see them going up by something larger than 1%. And particularly this year, it seems that the, you know, the state of Washington, we're facing a law enforcement, a hiring and retention problem, and that is starting to translate into salary costs. So backing up to page 39, the two policy questions for the council, well, I mean, there's of course the big question, do you want to make the ask? And if so, then the two policy questions are, how much do you ask the voters to consider? And then two, you have the ability to exempt senior or disabled low-income folks who qualify under RCW 8436381, which is in the packet, so you can see who fits that. And going back to, well, how much room do we have? Our maximum levy rate under state law is $3.37 and a half cents per thousand assessed value. We're currently levying $1.94 per thousand assessed value, but our assessed valuation does fluctuate. And you can see the last seven years, from 2019 back to 2013, we've seen levy rates that range from a low of this year at $1.94 to a high in 2013 of about $2.55. Well, this really represents market conditions and it does not have any impact on how much money the city collects. So that's something that always, you know, from a taxpayer's standpoint, you think, oh my, my house is worth more, therefore I'll pay more. From the city's standpoint, that's not the case, you know? The city council levies a dollar amount. That assessed value is really the mechanism by which people pay their proportionate share. Higher the assessed values, the less you pay per thousand. The dollars should be still fairly equivalent, as long as your assessed value doesn't change to your neighbor's assessed value. So the staff recommendation is that whatever proposal you come up with doesn't exceed $2.50 per thousand. And thinking on that is, we want to have room for natural market fluctuations as well as some capacity in case the council needs it in the out-years. So at $2.50, you know, you can imagine potentially fluctuating up by 50 cents to $3. There's still 37 and a half available. If we ever did bump up to that number, $3.37 and a half, let's say to get the dollar rate, the dollars that you levied, the levy, the levy rate had to be above $3.37, you simply don't collect that. So that's the reason to maintain some flexibility there is it could create a kind of a crisis in some particular year. So that's what we've got in terms of the details there. Again, budget-wise, you know, $557,000 is broken down as three officers, so that's 143,500 times three. $35,875 is 25% of that, assuming the school district would pay 75% of an officer position. And $40,000 is the cost necessary to bump the records position to full-time with benefits. And then the remaining $51,000. If you did choose to exempt senior, disabled, low-income, my estimate is that it would reduce revenue by $9,200 in the first year. And then the final kind of piece of the puzzle is just, well, what does that mean to an actual taxpayer? So you can see on page 40, just four examples. If your assessed value is 200,000, it would cost $112 a year. At $2.50, it bumps to $140. At 300, you're $168. And at 350,000, it's $196 a year. And I did give you a couple of examples just to, and to keep in mind that assessed values don't always reflect market conditions. In fact, often they don't. You know, 805 Talcott's currently pending at an asking price of 405, but its AV is 311. And then a recent closed sale at 168 North Township was 260, their AV was 211. So just important when you're thinking about that, you know, I think a lot of us think of what our house is worth, not what we pay taxes on, and just making sure that you can peel back that layer and know, so they can do math themselves. The deadline for the council to put this on the November ballot is August 6th. So for you, your next, the last regular meeting before that's the July 24th meeting. And of course, Dan, Doug, we're all happy to answer any questions you might have and we're looking for input tonight about, do you want to move forward? And if so, how, what changes might you like to see in the next draft for a second meeting?
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I have a few comments. I'm opposed to passing this on to the general public. You know, some of these people are living right on the edge and you're going to force people out of their homes that can't even afford to live in Cedar Woolley. Why would you want to go and spend $20,000 just to get it on the levy when you could use that $20,000? And somewhere or other, the city can come up with this money. I support the police department and to hire two or three more policemen, the city, they have to come up with a way to do it themselves without passing it on to the general public. I know the accountant there has got a sharp pen and he could work out something. I mean, you're going to have to start thinking about cutting something, not just adding something all the time. Some of these programs can be cut and put off to a later date. I just don't want to see these people go to the poorhouse. I mean, they don't make a six-figure salary every year. They're living on social security. And yeah, they get a little discount from the county, but they still struggle to make it. And to add any more, I'm certainly opposed to it, but I approve, any way the city can come up with some kind of plan to support these extra three or so policemen. Like I say, I really support the police and we're proud to have them. But I'm opposed to it. That's just me. I'm thinking about the people I represent that don't have a lot of money, especially the older and disabled and, you know, they grew up in a time when there was no 401K. There was no retirement plan. So all they had to depend on is social security. So that's the people I feel.
So Councilman Owen, right here in the ordinance, it does talk about that the council does have the option, it says the draft, it does not exempt them, but if the council chooses to exempt those taxpayers, the reduction in revenue would be a little over $9,000. So we do have the option to do that as a council, just kind of an FYI. Councilman Couch?
I think, did somebody else on the other end have their hand up?
Yeah. Councilwoman Kelly?
My question here is, can we offer the citizens choices on this ballot measure? Can we say, would you support this or would you support this? And I certainly think that, yes, offering a discount seems appropriate, but I'm just wondering, you're saying basically we have A or B and then C as the low-income or elder income.
Yeah.
But can we look at, can we offer those two things or do we have to choose one?
I think you have to, it would be, I'm not quite sure how the elections office could square up two competing initiatives, you know, let's raise it by this amount and that amount. I mean, what if both passed, then what do you do? So for the senior, disabled, low-income, that's just a council decision. If you want to do it, we include it in the budget. If you're qualified, you don't pay this at all, right? I mean, it's zero. So you go vote yes and it costs you nothing. But, you know, I'm just not sure how we can offer a menu of selections. Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. You know, ultimately, the question for the council though isn't, do you impose this tax on your community? It's, do you ask your community if they'd like to impose this tax on themselves? You know, I think there's a huge distinction there.
And I agree. I think that it's important that we do take this to the public at this point because it is a large amount. We've had to address several tax areas in the past years. So if we can say to the public, is this what you want? Then I think that's important.
I think it's important that we take it to the voters because the voters are going to be the ones that feel the brunt of it if we don't do anything. We're going to be faced with, when you call 911, you know, and report that your bike was stolen or your flowers are vandalized, a cop's not going to show up and take that report. You're going to be asked to submit a report online and we're losing that small-town sense of service that we have here. So I think it should absolutely go to the voters. It's a lot of money. It's an essential public service and I think this is exactly the type of decision that the voters should weigh in on.
I agree with that. Making it a choice of the public is the way we have to do it. And I also like the idea of leaving the seniors and disabled, I think it says, exempt from that.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. So put a lot of thought into this. And when I'm out speaking with my neighbors, you know, there's so much appreciation for law enforcement and our public safety officers here in Cedar Woolley. And when we talk about public safety, the number one thing that comes up, of course, is property crimes, being able to talk about car break-ins, hey, my gas got siphoned off, there's someone jumping my fence, rattling my door. Then it's about the speeding. I know you have 42 different places around town that you're checking into, but I'm looking forward to this more emphasis patrol, especially near Jameson and Railroad, of course, State Street and on Wicker. So with that said, you know where I'm coming from, that we want to see you there. And I'm really appreciative of this document here. This is a Cedar Woolley 2019 annual budget. And I would direct for folks, for future reference, on page seven, talks about critical goals and objectives. And our number one goal is to expand public safety services in and around Cedar Woolley. And so just a little timeline, 2012, people of Cedar Woolley voted to increase sales tax by 1/10 of 1% for law and fire equipment. And then in 2014, just five years ago, the council, council-matically, increased utility rates to fund two new patrol officer positions. So providing a safe community is the city council's top goal. That's what we want to do. So when we went, took a look at the budget last year and we were looking at what was in the mayor's balanced budget, we noticed that we increased staffing by three folks. None of them were in the police department and it was something that was discussed that was left off. So I do think it's time to get those things going for our public safety workers and our officers because we are growing as a city. I made a very compelling presentation at a work study just last month about the specializations. Those appealed to me greatly, especially with pro act, getting the poisons off our streets, reducing the supply and demand of those poisons that people are taking. I think it adds to the quality of life and it would be a great thing for Cedar Woolley. Also a fan of the K-9 unit, to actually do the process that you need to do instead of cutting people loose because you don't have the K-9 unit. And I think it'd be a great regional asset as well. So this is, I guess, more for Aaron and Doug and if you can help me out too, Lieutenant Dan. It's more of a philosophical question I have because it's something I support 100% that this needs to happen. And now it's going to come down to what tool in the toolbox are we going to use to do this? And that's why I brought that out about our objectives, what we did in 2012 with the sales tax, 2014. Now we have a past practice of what has happened to help with law enforcement with something council-matic, which means that we make that decision as the representatives of our neighborhoods versus going to a general election. And I think Councilmember Owen brought it out, there's a $20,000 expense to the city to do that. Now, I think everyone, I would think that it's very likely that if we were to say, do we support our police department, all the heads bob up and down here. Would we endorse this action? Yes. It just seems logical to me that we take that next step and save the taxpayers $20,000 and save the stress on our law enforcement officers and just do this council-matically. So what I would like to see is some sort of compare and contrast of the costs, if you will, the fiscal notes of what it means to take it to the general election with all that effort that needs to be done. I've noticed the ramp up in the public relations on the social media over the past month to express what's going on with the outreach and the value that is presented with the community that our law enforcement does. So I'd just like to be able to have that data. From my education, I'm asking these questions for understanding to, so we can make those right choices. Is this something we really need to go out and do to a general vote or is this something we can do council-matically? Because we do have that past practice of doing it in 2014. I recall that very vividly, the great presentation, the lineup of the officers, giving that great presentation here before the council. So that's my input that was asked for in this first reading. Thank you.
So the only tool that I can think of, and Doug jumped in if you can, think of another one, is the utility tax. And going back to our 2018 budget, kind of refreshing our recollection, the utility tax, a 1% increase is approximately, a 1% increase generates approximately $63,000 a year in new revenue. So we are currently at 9 and 1/2% and to generate the equivalent revenue would require about an 8 and 1/2% utility tax increase, just to kind of give you that magnitude. So, you know, it really is a council policy decision about whether you go to the voters for a property tax increase or you go council-matically through a utility tax increase. In terms of the $20,000 number, I don't know where that number comes from. The city of Cedar Woolley will be hosting a citywide general election in November of 2019 anyway. So there will no doubt be some increase in cost because we'd have an additional question on the ballot, but because we have a mayor's race that goes to every registered voter in the city, this becomes a second question. becomes a second question on a ballot that we're already paying for that goes to every voter in the city. So I really doubt that we'd be looking at a $20,000 cost. Now, when I asked Mr. Cunningham to help me get my arms around cost, he said he really couldn't do that. It's just too challenging based upon all the factors that go in, and how the elections get shared ultimately. But we're already paying for a citywide election in November. So that's where I don't think there's a huge cost on that.
If I can follow up. So I do have that information. I called for that information today, and I, I depend on that source. And if that source would like to identify itself, that's fine. But I believe that number. Also, I do want to make the distinction, because I have to explain this to my neighbors too. Why don't you put this out on the bond? The difference between doing something with the utility tax, or, you know, as Councilmember Owen said, with cuts, that this is not, we can't, this is an operational levy. It's not a capital levy. And so, as we say, state in page 31 of our annual budget under debt policies, debt will not be used to fund operating expenses, but will be used solely to fund capital expenses, which can include city costs associated with capital projects and long-term obligations. And so I think that's an important distinction when we're out talking with our constituents about the different tools that are there. We can't put it on the credit card, so to speak, with the bond. We're not paying salaries with a credit card. But again, I'll just hammer it back that I firmly trust the number of $20,000.
Any other ideas? So sidebar, you might not have heard, is, I heard, is utility tax really is the only tool that Doug and I could think of that would be council-matic?
All right, thank you for that.
Didn't know.
Thank you.
Okay.
And say, just putting this on, on the ballot, there's no guarantee it's going to pass. And what are you going to do then?
Well, I mean, the question's, what are you going to do then? I'd be happy to support you in making that decision. You know, my suggestion is that we're at a junction where the question is, what sort of, what is the level of service that the city council and the people of Cedar Woolley want from the police department? And, you know, the fork in the road is, do we continue to provide the enhanced level of service, and maybe even more, by funding additional positions, being more proactive than reactive, doubling down on our traffic unit, doing more drug buys and those sorts of things? Or do we step back and start taking some reports through, you know, online sources or call-ins, and just recognize that there are certain things that we wouldn't do anymore? And those are both totally legitimate paths that different communities pick. I've said for years, you know, one of the distinctions between a city and a county is sidewalks, right, and streetlights. Cities have nice places to walk with lighting. Counties don't, generally. And in law enforcement land, you also get a different level of service. In a city, you expect a faster response, and, and a response to a broader range of calls for service. But people happily choose to live in counties, recognizing that they're 15 minutes away from a deputy and a priority-one call. You know, and so those are truly just policy questions. And that's where I think, you know, the council's job is to go out, identify, you know, what are these, what is this range of options? What is it that you want to see? And then ultimately, the voters will decide, are they with you, or would they like to go a different direction? So my thought, though, is if voters said, no, we don't like that vision, then, you know, we talk about, how can we make this department function with what we have? And we know we've got to do something different than we're doing today. So the question is, what are we going to do less in 2020 than we did in 2019? I would also say, you know, we've been through this budget together now three times, I think. I don't know where you could find half a million dollars to cut to reprogram funding to the police department without wholly decimating a department. Now, if you, if we weren't committed to a library for 20 years, you know, that's about $400,000 a year. So if we, if we were to close, you know, go to the theoretical, close the library, that gets you three officers. You know, if you were to decimate the park system, simply close all the parks, you know, we could generate a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, so an officer and a half, maybe, you know. But those are the sorts of options that are out there. You know, we looked at selling the Union Cemetery during the recession, and trying to privatize that. You know, that saves you enough money to hire, you know, about a half of an officer. So, I mean, just to start translating, you know, what are these things we do for the community articulated in officer, or percentage of an officer value? Those are the sorts of decisions when you start looking at internal, you know, funding transfers.
You know, like I said, I have no objection to adding some more officers, but you don't have to add them all at one time. You could do it periodically at whatever the city can afford. But, but I'm just totally against putting it on the voter, voter pamphlet, because I feel for these people. I know a lot of those people. And we just keep reaching our hand in their pocket with utility increases, and all, and even, even the PUD has gone up dramatically. And by gosh, that takes, that takes a toll on people. I'm almost in that bracket myself. If there's any way to get around it, I say, do it. We have to live within our means. I have to live within my means. I've got a lot of wants too, but, but I can't afford them. We're going to have to, going to have to start cutting some spending and, you know, shifting it somewhere else. And like I say, I'm all for the, for the police department, and do, do anything to work out something for them. But that's just my feeling, Aaron. I, I represent the people.
Well, may I? I'm thinking that we're not looking at the, the very real possibility of putting in the exclusion for seniors and low-income. And I would guess that that would be something we would do. But I see no problem with asking the people of Cedar Woolley what they would like to do.
Yep. I agree. I think we should leave it up to the people to make their own choice about this, instead of making the choice for them. And we can also campaign for or against. We have that right to do that.
Why don't we do that for the library?
So the issue before us is, do we want to move forward with this?
Yes, I believe so.
To get the pay raises, maybe you can afford to support the police department.
Okay, so let's, let's stay focused on the issue before us. Let me just put it up, let me, how many of you are in favor of moving forward with the levy, levy lift? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so I guess we will move forward with this.
All right, so I'm gathering that's a, sort of a step in the process. It wasn't a vote to adopt an ordinance, but really you're looking for a second reading next time. And I think I'm hearing that the council, by consensus, would like to have the senior disabled low-income exemption language, which I, I, you know, honestly, I assumed you'd want that. It's, it's not there only because I couldn't figure out how to write it right in the pack it was due, so. But I, I figured that you'd, you'd be wanting to do that, and assuming that that was a concern. So we'll get that updated, bring it back to you. There's one other bit of language that I, I'm not in love with, and I guess I'd look for your thoughts on. The very first sentence of the ballot question talks about the Cedar Woolley City Council adopted ordinance, you know, blah, 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 concerning a proposition to provide for continual public safety police. I feel like I'd like to tighten that up a little bit. It just, you know, it says what's probably legally required, but it doesn't, it doesn't really seem to me to say exactly what we're trying to do. So if you're all right, I'd like to take a stab at changing that sentence to just be a little bit more clear, maybe to just say for police services or something like that. It is intended to be broad enough to cover police department costs, so we don't have to track forever that it can only go to, you know, some piece of that puzzle. But it would be forever restricted to the police department funding. So that's important to think about for Doug's successor in those many out years, that now we've always got to track this lift amount, that that has to go into the police department budget, just like our 1/10 of 1% sales tax is by law restricted to funding police and fire equipment. Okay, well, I feel like I've got direction. You good? Okay, we're good. We'll come back to you for a second reading.
Okay. So now we're going to move into executive session. It has to do with litigation. This is under RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101I. It'll be about 20 minutes, and action will be requested.
All right.
Actually, we've, we've already held the public comment, Mr. Breitler? And actually, this is a public, this is a, this is a meeting that's held in public. It's not a public meeting. So how about this? We have a, we have a second. We're going to be doing this again at the next public meeting. We'll be talking about this again. And I would encourage you and everybody in the audience at that point then to come up during public comment and share your thoughts. So, thank you. We've moved into executive session. Thank you. It is 8:54, and we are back. Do I have a motion?
I move that we execute the agreement between Country Class Assets LLC and the city.
Okay. Do you have a second? All right, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Dan Lee, seconded by Councilman Couch. Any discussion?
I think it was Councilman Owen.
Oh, Owen, sorry. Councilman Owen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And that is it. We are adjourned.